Good evening, everyone, and thank you for making the time to be here for Monday night at our Town Hall. Grateful for the church council who is Susan Harbinger leadership, working to find a way for people to have time to ask questions and get answered and to have dialogue with our new district superintendent. This might be the first time we've had the opportunity to meet Reverend Dr. Douglas Gilbreath and his wife is back there, Lauren Lynn. A few weeks ago, he was here for clergy review, so I introduced him to Levonia. We took a walking tour and that did include Monday through 11:00. So he said, "I'd like to have more meetings in Levonia." I said, "Whatever is possible, we'll be glad to help." And Dr. Gilbreath became our DS in July of this year. And so he's still learning the district. So I'm very grateful that he's willing to come and speak to us. He's been doing a lot of this. How many churches have you lost?
Oh, I've lost ten.
So it's not unique for us to ask for a Town Hall. It's a good thing because it's part of the work of the district superintendent to help communicate form relationships, get to know the local churches, and to share things that are happening from the cabinet level with our bishop. As I mentioned yesterday, we're now in a time of transition. Last week, the Southeast jurisdiction met for a special session and it'd been delayed for a few years, so they elected three new bishops. And they also reappointed and moved bishops to some new places of service. The Episcopal process, especially the Episcopal election and appointment, is really the last remaining message of the old, old Methodist appointment system that clergy from generations before enjoyed, where you went to conference with your luggage and you hoped to return to your home. You know, because they don't really know what's happening until that meeting. And so our new bishop, who will begin January 1st, is Bishop Robin Deeds. And our bishop, Mr. Silver Johnson, is going to serve the Virginia Annual Conference. So this is a time of transition and I'm sure Dr. Gilbreath will answer questions the best he can. Because I can imagine when you have new management coming, you're like, "Okay, well, that might change. We don't know until... Ask me, ask it in early January." I want to offer a prayer. We are recording this session because some people are unable to be here tonight. So just once you know it's recorded, we're really focusing on this area. So if you don't want people, like if you're worried your doctor's going to see you eating pound cake, don't worry, you won't be on film.
She knows.
She knows. Well, let me pray. Lord, we thank you for the gift of your church, a place to believe, a long to become, the faithful followers you're calling all of us to be. We thank you for a place where we can experience your grace and we thank you for this time together to ask questions, to hear, to have holy conversation. Bless our time, may we leave informed, give us just a time of good clarity and communication. And bless Dr. Gilbreath and his leadership. We pray for blessings on Bishop Sue as she's in the time of transition and on Bishop Deeds as she prepares to come to bear a new Episcopal leader. All these prayers and any more we lift up in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
I'd like to walk around a little bit. Yep, Hugh is right. I am your new district superintendent. I have been on the job now for 130 days and it has been the longest 130 days of my life, without question. I jumped into a position that I never aspired to. In fact, for those of you who serve on the staff parish relations committee, you know that you've made your election and Hugh has made his election for next year. I had made my election based upon the fact that my associate pastor was taking family leave. And because she was taking family leave, I did not think it was appropriate for me to leave Covington 1st, where I had been the senior pastor for 13 years. So imagine my surprise on a Wednesday morning and I can remember it like it happened yesterday. Wednesday morning, sitting in my office, working on my sermon, my phone rings and I look down at my phone as we all do. Looking at your phone, you check the number before you answer, right? Just to make sure that it's not a spam risk or it's not a number you don't have plugged into your phone. And I'm looking at the number and it says a Florida address. And it was a Florida number. And I thought to myself, "I don't know anyone from Florida. I don't know anyone from Florida who would be calling me." And then I remembered that we were having a funeral that coming Saturday and that we had family members of that family coming in from Florida. And I thought to myself, "Well, it might be a family member, I better answer it." I answered the phone and it was our resident bishop, Bishop Sue. As soon as I heard her voice and as soon as she said, "Hey Doug, this is Bishop Sue", I stood up and shut the door to my office because you never really want to get a phone call from your bishop, not telling, you know, no telling what they may say to you. And after we exchanged a few pleasantries, she said, "Doug, the cabinet and I have convened and we would like for you to serve on the appointed cabinet." And she explained a few things to me and after she explained a few things to me, the only thing I could think to ask when she said, "Do you have any questions?" was, "Bishop Sue, are you sure?" That's all I could think of. So as soon as I hung up from her, I went over to the parsonage, which is across the street from the church. Lynn was there. Lynn, I think you were back in the bathroom putting clothes away in the closet and I told her she needed to come out into the bedroom and sit down with me. And we sat down and I told her about the phone call that I'd received. And I looked at her and I said, "Do you have any questions?" And she looked at me and said, "Are you sure?" So, yeah, there are days when I'm absolutely sure, but there are other days when I really question this position that I have been flung into. I really do. But firmly believe that God has called me to this position and called me to this very particular season we are in this church as a denomination. And what a season it is. As Hugh was sharing with you, we received news this past week of a tremendous transition in the life of our conference as we are losing our bishop to the Virginia Conference and receiving a brand new bishop, who I had an opportunity to meet. She is a fascinating person, a great deal of energy. I was very moved by the information that she shared with us that she is one of 14 children in her family. So she's one of the youngest ones, but she comes from a very large family with lots of connections. But as she was sharing that with us, she looked out over the delegates to jurisdictional conference and said, "But you are my family as well too." So it was very heartwarming. She rides a motorcycle, or she drives a motorcycle, which I don't know of any bishop that's ever done that. So she's going to be unique. She is coming to us from South Carolina Conference, where she has been serving for several years now on Hilton Head. I mean, a tough appointment, right? You serve on Hilton Head. Oh darn, I mean, how rough can it be? And she's moving to the heart of Atlanta. But as Hugh shared with you, she will be starting on January 1st. I've already had several pastors call me. I've already had several administrative council chairpersons call me. I have had discernment committee chairpersons call me and ask, "With us receiving a new bishop, will anything change?" as far as the discernment process, as far as disaffiliation. And all I can say to that right now is, we'll know after January 1st. But Bishop Sue was actually asked that question at a Town Hall meeting and her response to that was, "No, nothing will change if we receive a new bishop because the discernment process and the following of paragraph 2553 is actually established by our conference board of trustees and not the bishop." I mean, you hear that, right? Our board of trustees of the North Georgia Conference are the ones who took paragraph 2553, worked through paragraph 2553, gave churches the process of disaffiliating if they so choose to do so. So that's what we're here to do tonight. You know, I asked Hugh, "Is this a conversation about disaffiliation or is this a conversation as far as information is concerned?" So I would much prefer to treat it as an informational meeting and not a disaffiliation meeting. So there's a big difference between the two. Several of the churches that I have been to, walking in, I knew that that church was moving towards disaffiliation. So the information that I would share at that meeting is very different from just coming into a church that just wants information and wants to know what's going on in our denomination. So let's treat it like that tonight. And let's go as far as saying that chaos is reigning in the United Methodist Church. Would you agree with that? Amen, it is. I know that there's an abundance of information out there and a great deal of the information that you're hearing, in my opinion, is misinformation. It's a great deal of misinformation. Now, are there some areas in the United Methodist Church in which we need to tighten up? Absolutely, and I'll be the first one to agree with that. As my brother Rodrigo Cruz, who is also district superintendent, also serves a church, which I don't know how he does both of those, but he serves a church, a fast-growing church in Gwinnett County that is represented by 29 different nationalities, very much a diverse church. Rodrigo serves that church and he reminds people all the time that we are not a perfect church, but we follow a perfect Savior. And that's kind of where I reside. I'm not perfect. Hugh is close, but he's not quite there yet. And, you know, there's no such thing as a perfect church and there's no such thing as a perfect denomination. I haven't found one yet. And I've been closely linked to several different denominations and each denomination has its strength and each denomination has its weakness. But one of the great strengths of the United Methodist Church, and I've been at this for a while. I'm not a cradle of United Methodist. Hugh, are you a cradle of United Methodist? No. I am not a cradle of United Methodist. I did not become a Christian until I was 20 years old. My wife Lynn, who is here with us tonight, our very first date was my baptism. There's a beautiful story that goes along with that. But we met the Sunday before I was baptized and I invited her to come to church with me because some friends of mine were going on picnic. She comes to go on picnic with us and I said to her, "Oh, by the way, I am being baptized that Sunday." So, you know, she's been a part of my faith journey since my faith journey began. But I have been affiliated and I know of many different denominations, the strengths of those denominations and the weaknesses of those denominations. But one of the great strengths of the United Methodist Church that I've been keenly aware of since becoming a United Methodist is the fact that the United Methodist Church has a very large umbrella. And I have been to, oh my goodness, you know, Hugh asked me how many of these informational meetings I've been to since becoming the district superintendent. I've done two or three of these a week. So that'll give you some idea of how many churches we have been to. I have been in United Methodist churches where you would have sworn you had just walked into a Roman Catholic church. Anybody ever had that experience of a United Methodist church? High, high Christology, high liturgy, very, very formal services. But I have also been in United Methodist churches where when I walked in and they broke the snakes out, it wouldn't have surprised me in one I.O. Anybody ever been into a United Methodist church like that? Oh my goodness. I've, you know, I've experienced the full broad spectrum of the United Methodist Church and that's always been one of the great appeals for me, is that the United Methodist Church is a church for all people. You can be a traditionalist and be a strong United Methodist. You can be a centrist and be a strong United Methodist. You can be a progressive and be a very strong United Methodist. Our church, our denomination, is large enough for all people. Now, does that put us in conflict with one another? Absolutely, it puts us in conflict with one another. Hugh, where did you go to seminary?
Asbury.
You went to Asbury. I went to Camlar and in my time at Camlar, which, Lord have mercy, would have been... I started Camlar 34 years ago. And I did finish. I finished in three years. So this 34 years ago has been 31 years ago since I graduated. But I remember being in seminary at Camlar at Emory and the debates that we were having then are the same debates we're having now. And some people ask the question, "Well, if we just keep debating this issue, isn't it tearing us apart?" Well, the reality is, when I was in seminary and even before seminary, the debates about human sexuality were going on, but one thing it was not doing is it was not dividing us. It was not creating a schism within the life of the church. We could debate with one another, but at the same time, we could love one another. We could care for one another. We could support one another. We could encourage one another, even though we strongly disagree on a lot of these different issues. One of the questions that was posed to me that Hugh shared with me that came from you, I found the question very interesting, but it says, "Do you agree it is the responsibility of the church council of Levonia United Methodist Church to educate our members of the view opposite of yours? What makes you think that your view is opposite of mine?" I mean, as a district superintendent, my views, you know, the reality of it is that my views are inconsequential to the decision that you might have to make. But do you want to know what my views are on human sexuality? My views on human sexuality are very simple. That no self-professed practicing gay or lesbian should be ordained and no United Methodist pastor should perform same-sex marriages. But your views are not opposite of mine. Do you know why those are my views? Because that is what the Book of Disciples says.
Scripture says it's what scripture says.
I mean, scripture certainly, you know, some biblical scholars, I'm not going to say all, but some biblical scholars today would suggest, and this is, you know, when I say biblical scholars today, I mean biblical scholars in the last 50 years. Biblical scholars today question if the scripture writers even had a concept of what we consider to be homosexuality today. For the biblical writers, gosh, can we turn this into a Bible study? I mean, we can talk about this. So let's take the New Testament and Paul's understanding, because Paul certainly addresses this issue. So the biblical scholars are biblical writers in the New Testament. So Paul is the only one who addresses the issue of homosexuality. Jesus never referred to it, even though he did refer to sexual sins, never specifically to the act of homosexuality. For Paul, remember that Paul was a Roman citizen and Rome, I mean, think about Vegas. And when you start thinking about Rome, Rome would be Vegas on stairboards. The devocary of Rome, you know, we all sat through history classes. So for Paul, the big issue for him when it came to the act of homosexuality really resided in and around Romans' religion and their temples. Because people would go to the temple not only to make a sacrifice, but also go to the temple for the temple prostitutes. And for Paul, it was an issue, I mean, right away for the temple prostitutes. That was an issue for Paul right away, so he addresses adultery as well too. But in the practice of the Roman temple, a man goes into the Roman temple to make a sacrifice and, you know, he's there without his wife, he's there without his kids, he's there with all of his buddies and they're looking around the temple prostitutes and they say, "Well, we don't have any women available." And for the Romans, it was like, "Well, what's the difference? A man holds Rome." That was Paul's understanding of it. And so it was pure devocary at that point for me as well too. When you treat sexuality as something that is not a gift from God. So, you know, that's kind of where I reside with that. But keep in mind, you know, the things that Paul did address that we've had to wrestle with for the past 2,000 years. Paul's the same one who said that women should never have authority over men. Are there more women here? It's not than there are men. Is your administrative council chairperson not a female? Yes, no? What about your SPR chairperson? We got over that issue, didn't we, guys? And we worked through that issue as well too. So Paul said that a woman should never take authority over men. I can tell you right now, in my experience of the church, if it weren't for women, the church would have died 1,000 years ago. Because women are the ones who have always gotten the kids up and got kids to church and supported the church. I can tell you, I wouldn't be a United Methodist minister right now if it weren't for the woman sitting in the very back of this room. We lean heavily upon female leadership in the life of the church. If it weren't for female leadership within the life of the church, where would we be today? You know, we can go a little bit deeper than that. Let's look at divorce. Paul also says that a minister should be the husband of one wife and one wife only. We got through that issue as well too. And I'm not sitting up here promoting that we should ordain self-professed practicing gays or lesbians, but what I am promoting is we have to be very sensitive about how we read the New Testament and what is the message of the New Testament. But it's a testament of grace. It's a testament of embracing people that most of society wants to reject. Can I get a little bit more personal with you on this? So Hugh, how long did it take you to get ordained as a United Methodist minister and elder in the United Methodist Church? Not longer than usual. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Like from the candidacy process?
No, starting college all the way through.
Nine years?
Nine years. From the time that I started college and I was on the six-year plan because my parents were willing to pay for six years for me to go to college. So six years of, well, let's break it down to five. So I'll give myself five because that's how long we're giving our son to finish up. And he'll finish up this May. He doesn't finish up college, but he finishes up his fifth year. So five years of undergrad, three years of graduate school and then two years beyond graduating from seminary. So it took me 10 years to become a United Methodist elder. So do you know that it takes about 10 years to become a cardiologist? Takes 10 years to become a neurosurgeon? It takes about nine or 10 years, some people even longer, to become a United Methodist pastor. So when I was going through the ordination process, it's a little bit different because I came in under the 1988 Book of Disciples. And when I came in, we were ordained as deacons during our second year of seminary, what would now be provisional elder. And then we were ordained as elders after we graduated from seminary. So I was going before the conference board of ordained ministry. And that's when we used to go to Simpson Wood and we would hang out at Simpson Wood for about three days and do interviews with small group and then we'd do the larger group as well too. I'd gone through my interviews with my small group and I was about to go into the room to appear before the entire conference board of ordained ministry, which at that time was about 40 people. And what they would do is they would just line the wall like this and they'd set a chair of the very metal and you'd sit in that chair and they'd just fire questions at you and you'd respond. And I was about to go into the room and one of the members of the board of ordained ministry, someone I deeply respected, who was also a leader within our conference, came over to me and shook my hand and said, "Doug, I'm so glad to see you here, but I need to share something with you." I said, "Sure." He said, "You need to prepare yourself to be denied." And Hugh knows and I know that if you're denied when you go before the conference board of ordained ministry, that's it. You don't get another chance, you don't get to appeal or anything. If they deny you, that's it. You go and do something else. Well, think with me, I'm in my second year of seminary. I'm in depth to my eyeballs and Lynn and I have been married, I think, for about eight months. So newly married, you know, ready to charge into my final year of seminary and this guy's sitting here telling me that I need to prepare myself to be denied. And when I asked him, "Why should I prepare myself to be denied?", he said, "Because nobody, nobody, and no church will want a blind preacher." Now, Hugh knows this. My wife certainly knows this and you don't. I'm legally blind. I was born with congenital macular degeneration with common rod cell deficiency, which limits my vision to 2,400. Wonder why my wife is here with me in the state of Georgia wanting driver's licenses? I've tried, but they will not get it to me because I can't pass the eye test. Glasses do not help. Surgery would not help. I was born this way. So after sharing that with me, you can imagine how devastating that was and how cruel that was. He then quoted scripture to me. Leviticus 21:18. And if you want to write it down, you can have it when you get home tonight. But basically what Leviticus 21:18 says, this is Moses talking to Aaron and telling Aaron about who can serve as a priest of God. And one of the, one of the statements he makes in there is, "No one with an eye disease or anyone who is blind can serve as a priest of God." So if you take scripture and you begin to disqualify people based on scripture, my question has always been, "Who could serve then? Who could serve?" And I'm not sharing that with you to say, "Okay, let's just throw the door open and, you know, everybody just come in." That's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is, is when we weaponize scripture to exclude people, there's very few of us that could actually stand up to the scriptures when it comes to being qualified to serve as a servant of God. And so that's kind of where I wrestle, okay? I'm not telling you to think like I do. What I'm saying is, for me personally, I wrestle with the scriptures and I have been wrestling with the scriptures for the past 35 years. And I will continue to wrestle with the scriptures and pray that God will give me the insight and the wisdom that, you know, that only He can give to help me to be an effective servant of God, to be an effective leader and to be a wise servant. And so when we began to disqualify people from serving as clergy, my heart breaks because I think that what we really need to do is take a step back and just ask the question, if we're going to begin to exclude people, where do we stop them? Where does that exclusion stop? And the more traditional side of that begins to ask the question, where does it stop? Where do we draw the line? Where do we draw the line? Because the line seems to be continuously pushed along those routes. One of the things that was asked as far as the questions are concerned is comparing homosexuality to adultery. And I guess, you know, you could look at it like that, but one of the questions that was asked was, "Well, I certainly wouldn't want to sit under a pastor who has committed adultery and continues to commit adultery." And I would agree with you 100%. In the Book of Discipline, there are certain chargeable offenses. Well, guess what's one of the chargeable offenses for clergy? Adultery. And if we commit adultery and it is discovered that we committed adultery, then our credentials are taken away from us. So just kind of keep that in mind when we begin to think about who, you know, who's fallible and who's not. I wouldn't want to, you know, be a church member if my pastor was in an ongoing adulterous relationship. I wouldn't want to do that. I wouldn't want a pastor if they had an addiction issue and were not getting help for that addiction. I wouldn't want to have a pastor who went into the local convenience store and stuffed his pockets full of produce and walked out. I wouldn't want to sit under a pastor who beat his kids on a regular basis. I wouldn't want a pastor who's abusive to his staff or to his church members. So, you know, there are certain qualifications here, and I'm going down a big old rabbit hole, so I'm going to jump out of that rabbit hole.
Why did they choose you?
Why did they choose me?
Even though you were blind.
Why did they choose me?
You know, they had a reason not to, so what was their reason?
Well, they didn't. That was just his cruelty. Because if, and this is, you know, we talk about the separation of church and state. If the conference board of ordained ministries had rejected me based upon my handicap, when there is no disciplinary limitations on who can serve and who cannot serve when it comes to physical disability, that was just a lawsuit waiting to happen. Not that I would have done that. It's the same way. I mean, if, you know, if I was applying to be a cab driver, yes, you know. We're not going to let you be a cab driver or a long-haul truck driver, you know, we're not going to be able to do that. But you think about the school system. If I applied to be a teacher, and they said, "No, you can't be a teacher because you're legally blind." Well, yeah, I can. And it's, you know, in the ministry, it's kind of the same way. You know, my, my visual impairment has never, well, I don't want to say never. My visual impairment, I think, has enhanced my ministry.
More than?
More than hindered. And, you know, a part of that is that in every church that I have served in, I've always had a huge number of church members who would come to me and say, "Look, wherever you want to go, whoever you want to visit, I'll go with you." And so I've always had the ability to involve other, you know, involve the laity in the ministry, the ongoing ministry of the church. For 13 years, when I was at Covington, I had the same driver for 13 years. After about nine of those years, because he was the same age as my dad, it really started scaring me. And when you can scare me in a car, there's a big issue. But I think also my, my visual impairment gives me a very strong sense of empathy with people.
And it's not a sin to be blind?
No, it's not. Well?
Is it? Is it a sin to be blind?
Okay, so in Leviticus, in Leviticus, where we so often want to go back to, when we start looking at the Holy Laws, if a person, think, okay, think of the story, you remember when Jesus, in John's Gospel, a blind man comes to him. In Mark's or Matthew's Gospel, they name him Bartimaeus. Bartimaeus? Bartimaeus.
This is a blind man?
Yeah, Bartimaeus. You caught me off guard there. So they name him, but in John, they don't name him. And you remember when he came to Jesus to be healed, and the question the disciples asked, "Who sinned? This man or his parents?" And so the belief in the Jewish community is, if you had a disability of any kind, if you had leprosy, if you had, if you were crippled, if you were mute, if you were blind, the belief was you were being punished by God for a sin you committed or a sin that your parents committed. So you asked the question, "Is it a sin to be blind?" According to Jewish tradition, yes.
But Jesus healed.
Is true. Okay.
And he said it wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, Jesus did heal him. And Jesus healed people of many diseases. But my opinion is, is that Jesus healed more hearts than He did anything else. I love the story of the woman at the well. You remember the woman at the well? That Jesus came to her and the Samaritan woman, and there was, if it's the bishop, tell her I'll call her back, all right? But, no, tell her I won't. But you remember when Jesus came to the woman at the well? I mean, this was a woman that had been involved with several men, the man she was living with, she was not married to, and Jesus could see into that. And Jesus healed her heart. He said to her, "Go and sin no more." Now, let me ask you a question. Do you think she did that? Do you think she went and sinned no more?
That particular sin. That's the one she brought up.
But he said, "Go and sin no more." Sin, no more. I don't know too many people. I don't know too many people. I can't tell you how many times I've thrown myself on the altar and said, "God forgive me for a sin I committed."
Me too.
And then turn around the very next day and commit the sin.
Yes, I want.
See, the beautiful thing is, is that where, and I was just, you know, reminded of this this past week in reading Paul's letter to the Church of Rome. I love Paul's writings, I do. And what is one of the most beautiful lines that Paul ever wrote was, "Where sin abounds, grace abounds as well."
Thank you.
I said, "Thank you, Jesus." Because if not, then, wow, I mean, we're, we're done. We're absolutely done. Because Paul says that the law cannot save us, and we cannot save ourselves, but we are saved by the grace of God, by faith in Him. So, yeah.
Jesus taught us.
Right. Let's not get away from that. I don't want to get away from the cross, all right? Yes.
Okay, so.
You know, I studied all y'all's questions, so.
That's fine.
No, we're, we're in rabbit holes.
Okay, so I wrote the question out. Probably didn't do a good job of comparing someone that was in favor of a pastor or whatever. And I guess I was trying to say, is, is, like you had said in the beginning, you wouldn't, you are not in favor of the Methodist Church performing marriages or...
Because the current Book of Discipline says no.
Okay, so, all right, so.
So if that changes, then I'm going to have to wrestle, I'll wrestle for that point on.
Okay, so, and I understand from a Book of Discipline standpoint.
Yes.
Like, and I understand that as Methodist, right. But as a, from a Christian standpoint, or is that, is that a fair statement to...
Okay. Break it down, because I think that was one of the questions that was being asked. We know what the Book of Discipline says.
Right.
We know what Bible says.
Right, right. I'm talking about the Bible.
So this is not a cop-out on my part, okay? This is not a cop-out on my part, and I promise you it's not. One of my heroes of the faith is, or was, Dr. Wiley Stephens. Hugh knows Wiley. Wiley was the senior pastor at Dunwoody First United Methodist Church for 23 years. He hadn't retired because he turned 72, if he, you know, if he had, no, he turned 70, and at the time, that was mandatory retirement age for a United Methodist pastor. It changed the next year, and it made him so mad because he just wanted, he wanted to keep going. But he had retired at 70. When he retired at 70, he and his wife Lynn had moved to Covington because one of their children lived in Covington, and that's where all their grandkids were. And Wiley Stephens, one of the most gifted preachers in the North Georgia Conference, started attending my church. And the intimidation on a, on a Sunday-to-Sunday basis of him sitting out in the congregation and me attempting to preach in front of Wiley Stephens, he was so encouraging, he was so supportive. And I'll never forget the advice Wiley Stephens gave me one time, as pastor and as a Christian, that I used so often. He would come to me and he would say, "Doug, I want you to remember, you're in sales, you're not a manager." And so some people have misinterpreted my presentations and tried to narrow that down by saying, "So basically, Doug, what you're telling us is, love the sinner and hate the sin." That's one of the worst statements in Christianity today. You know, you see them magnets up on refrigerators with that statement on it, because it's not biblical, okay? That's nowhere in the Scriptures whatsoever. But if you want to put it in biblical language, it would always be, "Love the sinner and hate your own sin." Because we're not going to be judged based upon somebody else's sin. We're going to be judged upon our sin. And so I want to focus on making Doug a better person and going on to perfection as a person and take as many people around me as I possibly can. I wrestle with the Scriptures around the issue of homosexuality because I'm not sure at this point that the biblical writers had a clear understanding, as we do, about homosexuality. It wasn't been as prominent in their culture as it is ours. And I, listen, guys, I, I see it and I know it, okay? The commercials on television, we're inundated with it. Popular culture, popular movies, popular TV shows, it's even made its way into Disney cartoons now. And, and I know that it makes us all very uncomfortable, it makes me uncomfortable. But I'm growing in my understanding of human sexuality and that there are many expressions of human sexuality. Some of them, I think, are beautiful, others of them, I question. I really question. You know, one of the hot topics and hot issues for us is the issue of children making decisions about their sexuality. You know, when, when I was four and five years old, when I was six, seven years old, the only thing I could think about was playing football.
Amen.
And it wasn't an issue of, "Am I a boy or a girl?" I never wrestled with that. And I tell people this all the time, gosh, I'm almost hesitant. No, I'm gonna tell you. I'm gonna tell you. I mean, y'all live far enough away from me, you can't come and burn my house down. You wouldn't want to make that drive, it's too far away. I remember when I was 14 years old, when I was 14 years old, each, you know, during the summer, we would, we'd go to Pine Tree Country Club. You know, we, we had a summer membership, and that, that's all my family could afford, and we were thankful for it. But I went to school with a brother or sister, they were twins. And so we, they were, they were two years older than me. So I can remember when I was 14 years old, being at the pole one day, and, I mean, these were two gorgeous people. I mean, both of them, absolutely just gorgeous people. You know, he was tall, he was lean, you know, he was tan, well, so she, so was she. And I can remember being at the pole one day, and some, I mean, the bells went off, and she climbed out of the pole one day, and I was like, "Wow." There you go again, Paul and his, and Jesus and His teachings on us. But she climbed out of that pole, you know, standing there on the side of the pole seeing both of them, I didn't sit there and look at them and go, "Huh." I wish, I wondered which one of these I'm going to be attracted to. God made me to be a heterosexual. And that, being that was not a choice. That's who I am. Before going to seminary, I worked at a adolescent psychiatric hospital for four years. I worked with kids between the age of 12 and 17. 17, because as soon as they turned 17, you know, we started working to discharge them because their insurance was going to run out. And I worked with a lot of kids who had been put in that hospital because they were gay. And parents wanted that to be medicated out of them. And I got a feeling, after all these years, that's something I'm going to have to repent of. Because we did more damage than we did good. Did more damage than we did good. But most of those kids were worse off when we discharged them when they came out. But if you get, you know, that, that's where my empathy gets in. That's where my empathy gets in. Sorry about that. I hadn't thought about that in a long time. And maybe it's because I don't let myself about that. That was taken. Yes, sir.
So I'm grateful for your testimony and your witness. Wonder if you could talk a little bit about disassociation? Bishop Osterman encouraged us into this conversation. She spent hours on the road, just like you have, trying to share information with churches who many are ill-informed.
Right.
This association is a packet of material that's like inches high.
Yep.
It's very detailed.
Very detailed.
It's very complicated.
Yes, it is. So, yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead. As I understand it, we have a window between the first of January and the end of February. If we would choose to have a two-thirds affirmative vote to disassociate from the United Methodist Church, and that vote would be ratified, maybe, by conference in June.
Yes.
What happens, what happens to the churches that maybe are ill-informed? What about the window? What, what happens after that window closes?
Okay.
Does it get worse? Does it get more complicated, you know, as time goes by?
Yes.
I've seen, I've seen figures where if a church had disassociated, it would cost them $150,000. They waited trying to get the information to their congregation, and that's going to cost them $250,000. So we, we lost 70 churches in June. The numbers flow around into the hundreds to come. So what I want, what I would like for you to do is, I would like for you to bring good news to this church of how we can grow our congregation. How we can reach out to the communities better, how we can excel in being Methodist.
Very good. So while you caught me off on, off-guard on laughing, and I appreciate you catching me off-guard on that. Because what I have shared with so many of the churches that I have gone to is, I would much rather be here talking to you about missions. I'd much rather be here talking to you about outreach. I'd much rather be here talking to you about community engagement, and I'd much rather be here talking to you about discipleship and making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. That's what we're supposed to be doing as a church. Leboni First United Methodist Church is perfectly situated in this community to have a tremendous impact on this community. You know, what's the old expression when it comes to real estate? Location, location, location. Where you are located and your campus is uniquely positioned to have a tremendous impact upon this community. You're very visible. You're very visible. You have a young pastor that is highly engaged in this community. You have a young pastor that is highly engaged in this community, and building the bridge from this church into this community is exactly what I want to be able to help you do. Now, the one thing that I've become profoundly aware of as a district superintendent are the number of resources available to the local church. You know, the whole time that I've spent, thirty years spent as a local pastor of the church, I always thought it just kind of fell on me. You know, it, it was up to me to lead the church, it was up to me to drive the church. But what I've become aware of since becoming a district superintendent is the number of resources available to churches. The reality of it is, we are going to lose churches to disaffiliation effective July first. What those numbers will be, I'm not exactly sure. But I know that the conference is absolutely dedicated to support our churches, to encourage our churches, to grow our churches. We have a office that is called the Office of Congregational Excellence that has a vast number of specialists who can come in and work with any church on any issue they want to work on. So let's say here at Leboni First, you wanted to work on visioning for the future. You know, we want a five-year plan, you know, of what we will do over the next five years. Will we reach young families with children? Will we target families with youth? Or will we target, you know, people of retirement age? I, I don't know what the population of Leboni First, I don't know the direction the population is going. If you wanted to develop a discipleship plan, we have an abundance of resources that can come in and help you with discipleship, a path to discipleship. But we also have people that can come in and work with you on community engagement. Because I believe that's where a church will grow. I was meeting with a church earlier today, one of our churches that is in the process of applying for a BEEC grant. And talking with this church and hearing their plan for community engagement is kind of really neat, and it's something we would not expect. But they have the property to do it. What they're doing is they're building a, they're dedicating a space on their campus for a community garden. And so, they're going to build this community garden that is accessible to people of all ages, even people in wheelchairs. And their vision is, is to invite the community to come in and be a part of that community garden. And then on Saturday mornings, having a large farmer's market on their campus to bring even more people from the community onto their campus so that they can begin to share the good news of Jesus Christ with you.
The vision stamp is deep. It would be our obligation to go onto the website or go into the office to seek out those helps. But I want you to address the window that you said.
Okay, so let's talk about the window, thank you for bringing that up. So, as we all know, paragraph twenty-five fifty-three has a shelf life to it. And that shelf life is basically over for paragraph twenty-five fifty-three on December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, that's it. So, at that point, paragraph twenty-five fifty-three ceased to exist. And that's by action of the General Conference, not by the, not by the Annual Conference, not by the jurisdictional conference, but by the, by action of the General Conference. And some people have asked the question, why has that not been extended? Well, we, we had, we had this special call of General Conference in twenty-nineteen with a full anticipation that we would then, then be back at General Conference in twenty-twenty. Well, pandemic hits. Pandemic continues in twenty-twenty-one, pandemic continues in twenty-twenty-two. The General Council on General Conference then extend General Conference to twenty-twenty-four. Churches are looking around saying, whoa, wait a second. You know, if paragraph twenty-five fifty-three ends on December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and General Conference is not until twenty-twenty-four, then if we're going to disaffiliate, we need to do it now. And I think that's a part of the myth, that's a part of the myth. Because what I would share with you is your window of opportunity, you're right. A letter has to be in the district office between January first and February the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, if, if the church wants to move to a vote. So that letter has to be in place. But the reality of it is, nothing is going to change until at least twenty-twenty-four. And if you listen to the leadership of the United Methodist Church, and I'm talking about people above my pay grade, I'm talking bishops and other, you know, high-ranking leaders within the United Methodist Church. The belief is at this point that nothing's going to change in twenty-twenty-four. Language will not change in twenty-twenty-four. There are even some who are saying that the language will not change in twenty-twenty-eight either. That it would, consideration would be given somewhere around twenty-thirty-two or twenty-thirty-six. That, that's the belief at this point. So the language would not change. The language concerning human sexuality, that self-professed practicing gays and lesbians will not be ordained, and United Methodist clergy will not be allowed to perform some sex marriages.
Language and the discipline.
That's the language and the discipline. Okay, so what I would love for you to do is go back there and sit beside my wife because that's the same question she keeps asking. You know, Lynne, Lynn has driven me, how many of these you mean driven me to? I mean, twenty-twenty-five of these? It's only a hundred and six churches in the district. But that's the question I keep asking. Why? Why do you want to leave if the language has not changed? See, this is fascinating. So, the Virginia Conference where Bishop Charlotte Lewis was the bishop, she's now going to Mississippi. The Virginia Conference, the South Carolina Conference where Jonathan Holston, these are byproducts of the North Georgia Conference. These are clergy that came out of our conference field like a bishop. Jonathan Holston is not allowing a single church in South Carolina to disaffiliate. Charlotte's not allowing any church in Virginia to disaffiliate because paragraph twenty-five fifty-three says, if the language changes. The language has not changed. It has not changed. There is a high probability that the language will not change in twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-eight, that it might be, it might change in twenty-thirty-two or twenty-thirty-six. I want y'all, I want y'all to think about twenty-thirty-six. How many years is that from now? You just, you just, I, I'm glad you said it. Now, listen, I want you to say it louder.
I don't have to worry about it.
Well, in the reality of this, and I don't want either, guess what? I'm going to be on a beach somewhere, you know, drinking margaritas because I'll be retired by then. But, so, the reality of it is, the reality of it is, this is a generational issue. Would y'all agree with that? It's a generational issue. Our, my kids, my kids, and my kids range in age from twenty to twenty-eight. It's not an issue for my kids. Yeah, the fascinating thing is, they don't see race, aren't my kids. They don't have, they don't have any issues with race, and they don't have issues with human sexuality. They look at the character of the person.
I just believe that we've got people running the Methodist organization that don't know what they're doing. I mean, you're talking about, why, why are we, you know, as churches having to deal with something that, that they're waiting to twenty-twenty-four to even come back and say, I mean, this is idiotic?
It, it's crazy.
It is. So how do we, how do we as churches get these people that are at the top making these decisions to, to say, look, just what you said, this is probably not going to happen, or, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, it's just...
Well, and the other big question, and, and thank you for saying, the other big question. So, the history of paragraph twenty-five fifty-three, this is the fascinating history of that paragraph. That paragraph was introduced at General Conference twenty-nineteen by a very traditional conservative caucus of the General Conference. With the expectation, if they put it in the discipline, then the progressive church would then disaffiliate. But guess what happened? The progressive church looked around and said, we're not leaving. We love the United Methodist Church, and the tent's big enough for all of us. And so, that's when you began to see the more conservative churches begin to disaffiliate. Now, the reality of it is, there's, there's some issues that need to be addressed within the United Methodist Church. And, and one of the things that is high, you know, I think a high priority for our bishop and the bishops of the southeastern jurisdiction is upholding the book of discipline. That's been a big question in a lot of the churches that I've gone to is, oh, we're not following the discipline. Yeah, we are. Now, there are violations of the book of discipline in other jurisdictions, but part of the, part of the structure and our polity within the United Methodist Church, and a lot of people don't recognize this, is we're in the southeastern jurisdiction. Like the SEC, you know, Southeastern Conference of College Football without Texas and Louisiana. I wish Louisiana was no longer a part of the southeastern conference because I'm a huge Alabama fan, and that was a painful day the other night. Very painful, but I hit your Georgia on for you Georgia fans. So, the southeastern jurisdiction of the, of the, you know, of the United Methodist Church and the southeastern jurisdiction, we are upholding the book of discipline as it relates to issues of human sexuality. That's been the big accusation, you know, you're not doing it, you're not doing it, you're not following the discipline. But in other jurisdictions, I mean, I mean, we all know, I mean, y'all read the news as well as I do, you go to the internet as well as I do, there is a self-professed practicing lesbian bishop right now. But she was elected in a jurisdiction where, I mean, she came out of San Francisco, San Francisco Church. And so, she was elected, and that's been a big issue for everybody. And everybody asks the question, well, why don't we do something about that? Why don't we discipline her? This is interesting. In our book of discipline, no jurisdiction has authority over another jurisdiction. So it's not like the southeastern jurisdiction can look at that jurisdiction and say, we, we can't bring charges against her, we can't do, you know, we can't hold her, we can't discipline her. Because in nineteen sixty-eight, I was four years old, in nineteen sixty-eight, you'll remember, that's when the Methodist Church joined with the United Brethren Church, and we became the United Methodist Church. Anybody around when that happened? Oh, good, good. And so, we do have some cradle methods in here. So, you'll remember when that happened. So, here's a fascinating piece of history. The southeastern jurisdiction and another jurisdiction, and I can never remember what the other jurisdiction was. It's probably central west or something like that. But we were a part of that, you know, let's come together, let's become the United Methodist Church. But the southeastern jurisdiction and another jurisdiction held back and said, the only way that we will become a part of the United Methodist Church is you have to put in the book of discipline that jurisdictions do not have oversight of other jurisdictions. You know, why we did it? We did it so that another jurisdiction could not hold us accountable for not electing black bishops. Or electing bishops that would work to integrate our churches. And so, that little nugget has come back and bought us on, you know, point. So, that is currently the way the United Methodist Church is structured. So when you have a clergy person in another jurisdiction that is doing something that to us just seems crazy, we have no jurisdiction over them. We have no means of discipling them. They have to be disciplined within their own conference and within their own jurisdiction. So, and, and, and they're, you know, what I would consider those people to be are what I, you know, what are called outliers or just, you know, rogue clergy. But who in this room doesn't have an outlier or a rogue person in their family? You know, I've, I've got a family member that wholeheartedly believes in reincarnation. And you ought to see the conversations that we've had with one another. But that's, that's one of my family members. Now, if she was the only member that you knew of my family, then you would consider me to be a nut job as well, too. I have another family member that believes, believes in ghosts and, and, and used to do ghost tours and used to do goat, you know, paranormal research and everything. Now, if she wasn't the only person you knew in my family, what would you think about me? I'm, I'm a nut job, and certainly not Christian. So, no, if you believe in ghosts, it's okay. I mean, I don't want to start tagging people here.
Believe in the holy ghost.
In the holy ghost, there you go. But, but those are what I consider to be outliers. And the reality is, is that there are fifty thousand United Methodist clergy. And what one percent of those clergy are doing do not speak on behalf of the other ninety-nine percent of us. Because they certainly don't mean. You know, one of the big myths going around is the United Methodist Church will no longer believe in the core, the core beliefs of Christianity. You know, take United Methodism off the board, but we're talking core Christian beliefs that will no longer believe in the virgin birth, that will no longer believe in the physical resurrection of Jesus, that we will no longer believe in the divinity of Christ, that we will no longer believe that Jesus is the way, the truth, and life, and the means to our salvation. I mean, there's a long list of things that, you know, we won't no longer believe. I don't know a single United Methodist minister that doesn't believe in the virgin birth. I don't know a single United Methodist minister that doesn't believe in the physical resurrection of Jesus. I don't believe in a, I, I don't know a single United Methodist minister who doesn't believe that Jesus is the way, the truth, and life. I, I don't know many ministers want that. And I've been at this for a long time. So, what, what some, you know, seminary professor says or what some minister held up in some, you know, I don't know, glass capsule someplace is saying about the United Methodist Church or saying about the virgin birth or anything, those people don't, that person doesn't speak on my behalf. And I'm along with the remainder of the United Methodist clergy who believe in the articles of religion and the basic tenets of the Christian faith. I, I've heard our bishops say, I've heard our bishops say, you know, if the United Methodist Church ever stops believing in the virgin birth or the United Methodist Church stops believing in the physical resurrection of Jesus, if we stop believing in the Bible, she's checking out and going to go and do something else. And, and I would agree with that a hundred percent. So, what some group or person believes, again, does not represent what I believe or what you believe, yes, ma'am? No, do not apologize.
So another, is there any other, like, things that are coming up in twenty-twenty-four? Like, if you are fairly confident that we know language change on the...
I could be proven wrong, but from what I'm hearing is that...
Is there any significant changes to that?
No, no, nothing else. I pray God knows. Better, I will be needing something else. But I'm going to go back to this gentleman's question as well, too, because I need y'all to hear this, okay? So, let's say that I am completely proven wrong and the language changes. And when we say the language changes, all they're talking about is a resolution to pull that language out of the discipline. It wasn't a part of Wesley's original discipline anyway, it was not introduced. Was it nineteen seventy-two?
At the Atlanta General Conference.
Yeah, the Atlanta General Conference. Leave it to us. So that language is only invented in the discipline for fifty years. If that language is removed, if that language is removed, then... then our leadership is absolutely confident that other resolutions will come in place that will be very similar to paragraph twenty five fifty three. So if this, this, this narrative that if you don't disaffiliate now, you'll never have a chance to disaffiliate, is absolutely untrue. If the language changes, and a church wants to move towards disaffiliation, there will be a means through which the church can disaffiliate. Churches have always had the ability to disaffiliate. There's other paragraphs in the Book of Discipline that gives a church a process of disaffiliation. It's just that twenty five fifty three was a much simpler path to disaffiliation. And, you know, I have to believe that if the language is removed, there will be resolutions put in place to give churches the ability to disaffiliate that will be very similar, if not more generous, than paragraph twenty five fifty three. That answered your question that I took a whole lot of time to answer, and that's yours as well, too. Um, so, there you go. But this is the other thing I want, and I got y'all, I, this is the other thing I want y'all to hear. You know, as a United Methodist church, you have a great deal of autonomy. I mean, you, you may not think that, uh, but you do have a great deal of autonomy. So, uh, let's say the language changes, uh, be it twenty twenty four, twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty two, twenty thirty six, twenty forty, you know, whenever it might change. The church still maintains a great deal of autonomy because your church, your staff parish relations committee can say without question, um, if the United Methodist Church begins to ordain self-professed practicing gays or lesbian, we're not open to a practicing gay or lesbian minister. And then that's not going to happen. Uh, it's not going to happen. I promise you. Because as a district superintendent, and this is the spirit of the cabinet as a whole, I don't want to send a minister to a church where they're not going to be fruitful. I don't want to send a minister to a church that will destroy the church, or destroy a clergy's ministry. Um, it, it, it just wouldn't work out. Is this, has this church ever had a female pastor? Yes, good. Uh, have you ever had a pastor of color? No, no. Not saying that you wouldn't be open to that, but, you know, it's like I told my, my church back in Covington, um, when we had conversations in around this, because I had a Sunday School class, Lord, I had a Sunday School class, um, that were, that created all kinds of issues for me. But, you know, they, their, their, their battle cry was, we don't want a gay preacher at a Covington first. And I'm like, look, you know, in this church, it's almost, uh, two hundred, two hundred, two hundred years? Two hundred and fifty years coming up, uh, almost near two hundred and fifty years. You've never had a female senior pastor, and you've never had a pastor of color on staff. So do you think they're, they're going to go from zero to a hundred, you know, overnight? No. Uh, but, you know, as the cabinet and the bishop, we want to make appointments to churches where the minister will be well received, well loved, and that minister will well receive and love that congregation as well, too. The other issue is, your board of trustees have a great deal of authority in the life of the church. So your board of trustees can establish wedding policies. Do y'all have wedding policies here, my buddy first? Or anybody can get married here?
We don't have policies.
Everybody's looking around now. You know, your, your board of trustees can establish wedding policies and say who can and cannot be married in the life of this church. So let's say that the language eventually does change. This church can step forward and say, um, no same-sex marriages are to take place in our sanctuary or on our campus. And that's, that's a part of the responsibilities and duties of the, uh, trustees are to establish policies for the use of the facilities of the church. And, and, and nobody, nobody can book up against that.
If you write policy, there are always exceptions to policy.
Always exceptions to policy. I mean, a huge exception. Yeah, I mean, a huge exception when, uh, when I first went to Covington, uh, the policy was, the only people who could be married in the sanctuary were, um, members of the church, children of members, or grandchildren of members. Those, those were the three categories. And we had a young couple, uh, he was being deployed, uh, to Afghanistan. They were, uh, visiting family that were not members of our church. Uh, and I made an exception to the policy, and let them get married in our sanctuary. So, because I'm a military brat. It's a soft spot for me. Uh, but, um, yeah, there's always exceptions to policies. I'm all right with you on that. Okay, yes, sir.
Oh, I did have a question a little bit there. Help me and maybe others, the total oversight of the churches. Because I have never totally understood the hierarchy. You got the jurisdictions.
Yes.
With Southeast. Now, is the General Conference worldwide?
Yes, yes.
Is there a conference that encompasses, let's say, just all the North America or something?
Yeah, no. And, and, and fascinating that you asked that question. Because I learned, see, this was my first jurisdictional conference. I was not a delegate, I was there for support. Um, and I was told I had to be there. So, uh, I, so in Europe, the European Methodist churches, United Methodist churches, they will actually come together in Europe and hold a single conference. The United Methodist Church in Africa, which is the largest part of the United Methodist Church at this point, they will come together and hold, um, a single conference. In the Philippines, they do the same thing, in Central America, they do the same thing. The United States is the only region that does not come together and have a regional conference. And so there was some, um, resolutions that were presented at General Conference, I mean, a jurisdictional conference, um, that we need to do that. Because we deal with issues that Europe doesn't, we deal with issues that Africa doesn't. They deal with issues that we don't. So that's a good question. Uh, and, and a week ago, I wouldn't have been able to answer that question. And I've been at this for, you know, thirty-one years, so thank you for that. But that, that is, we are looking to resolve that. Because all the other regional, um, parts of the church do that, we're the only ones who don't. And that may be part of the reason why we're at such odds with one another as well, too, in the United States, around the United Methodist Church. Does that make sense? Yep. Because we can't come together and talk together. Good question.
So far, you've answered a lot of them.
It's like, it's like a, it's like a fire hydrant.
I'll be like the military, I'll, I'll tell you what you've already heard. So we're a southeastern jurisdiction.
Yes, sir.
Southeastern jurisdictions, discipline is the same, still enforced the same.
Yes.
And is being enforced.
Yes.
Nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed.
Nothing's intended to change in that language until way back when. So with that said, and as long as we're enforcing our discipline, we need to get on with the business of the church and grow.
Do y'all get an amen to that?
Amen to that.
All righty. Yes.
Some of the previous churches that I have served, they have disaffiliated. And their rationale, when I ask the people why, they were smaller churches. They were very small churches, and most of the churches that left last year, the seventy.
Were part-time.
Very part-time. And, and so these are like family chapels, and, and they had been told by the conference for many years that, you know, or this myth that we're going to start closing the small churches, and they just decided to set their own future. So it really wasn't anything, when I talked to these members, asking why they disaffiliated, it wasn't anything related to human sexuality. They saw an opportunity to leave, to have their building, and to, and to stay possibly open longer. So it wasn't anything related to this present.
Presentation.
Yeah.
And most churches, most of the churches that I've gone and have conversations with, um, most of it centers around, um, a- as he was saying, property or control is what it comes down to. And, and not over the issue of, uh, human sexuality. Uh, because one of you posed the question, which I thought was, was a beautiful question, it was more of a statement than a question, um, that, you know, Levonia First is going to be open to all people, regardless of who they are. Uh, you're going to love whoever walks through the doors of this church and provide them with a church family, regardless.
But that's not the, that's not the thrust of the conversation. We are to, we are to reach out and love, and to accept, and to, you know, disciple.
Right.
But, you know, what's the higher?
And I get that, I get that. And I hear you on this. Sure.
How we approach each other.
Right.
But whose approach, whose, you know, preaching to us, whereas, you know, who's getting appointed and works, and what's the policy?
Right, I'm with you.
I was the person who posed the question that you read first.
Okay.
Uh, the witness, and I think I said opposite view.
Yeah.
Is because you are serving under a bishop who has an opposite view.
Yes. But the bishop has surrounded herself with district superintendents who I would consider, the majority of us are what I would call centrists, um, you know, right smack in the middle. Um, you know, some people say that the centrists can't make up their line about anything. I, I remember years ago, sitting down with my dad when I first began to, uh, uh, vote. It was going to be the first time that I voted, uh, for a president. Um, can you guess on who that president would have been? It was, it was the last president that I actually, um, felt good about voting for.
Kennedy.
My gosh, I wouldn't even form with a candidate. I was actually, he was Reagan, Reagan, Reagan.
You just look over.
I just thought, my gosh, y'all didn't take me home and put me to bed.
Abraham Lincoln.
Abraham Lincoln. Yeah, I, this is a funny story, and I'm not going to go into it, I'm not going to go into it. Uh, my dad was stationed at Carlsville Air Force Base and saw Kennedy on the morning, uh, on the day that he was assassinated. Uh, you, because you remember, the Kennedy flew to, uh, to Fort Worth and had a prayer break. Because my dad was on the tarmac watching him, Jackie, get off the plane. I wasn't born, but as a part of our family, yes. Because it gets better than that. And so after the prayer break, because he then got back on the plane, flew to Dallas, and then was assassinated. I was born nine months to the day that Johnny PewDie was assassinated. And when I confronted my dad on that, I can't believe I'm telling you all this, when I confronted my dad on it, I was like, you always tell me how depressed you were. He said, well, son, I was, he goes, I was in the military, I didn't know we were going to, you know, war with the Russians, with the Cubans. We didn't know it was an inside job or anything. I was like, Dad, I was conceived to me. And then he was like, he was like, well, thanks, son, there wasn't anything on television.
At least he didn't name the Oswald.
Oh, that's true. But, but I, I was telling my kids the other night, so in our, in our family album, you know, one of our family albums, there, there's a picture of a grave, and I could never figure out who, who that grave belonged to. Uh, and I was sitting down with my dad, and this, this, a couple of months ago, I was sitting down with my dad, and I was like, Ken, why didn't you take a picture of this grave? And he said, that's Lee Harvey Oswald's grave. And off to the side, you can see like half of a woman. And I was like, well, who is that woman? I thought it was my mom, I thought it was a funeral or something. And it's Lee Harvey Oswald's mom. She would sit out at the graveyard and charge five dollars for someone to come up and take a picture of this one. So, no, I did not vote for Kennedy. All right. Uh, I'm going to hang around for a few minutes. Uh, who made the pound case?
We had a lady.
Yeah, you got a lady.
We had a lady that made those for us.
Fantastic. And I had a Bible in the living room, so very fantastic. Listen, y'all been great, y'all been great. I, I thank you for enduring my stories and ramblings and everything like that. Okay, if I give a blessing for us, uh, before we get down. Holy gracious God, for these, your saints, I celebrate. I celebrate the love of the church, I love, I celebrate the love they have for one another. I celebrate the love they have for the pastor. I have, uh, and I celebrate the love they have for their community. I pray that you continue to bless them, that you lead them with your Holy Spirit, as they seek to make disciples of your son. Fill them with your love, fill them with your peace, fill them with your compassion. For it is in Christ's name we pray. And together we say, amen. Thank you, guys.